...of the City Council of the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri to be held on Monday, on Monday, July 1st, 2019 at 7:00 PM in the City Council Chambers at 301 South Fifth Street will now come to order. We will have invocation by the Reverend Brian Sharp, Grace Christian Fellowship Church.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is always an honor to do this. Let us pray. Father God, we come before you tonight and we thank you, Lord, that you are the kind of God that we can depend upon, Lord. There's a lot of things in our world today we can't depend upon, but we can depend upon you. And Father, during this week, we're celebrating our Declaration of Independence, Lord, and we thank you, Lord, for this country and this community that we can celebrate our independence from oppressive forces and oppressive powers. And we thank you for that, Lord. But there's also, Lord, in the same thought, Lord, we want to declare our dependence. We want to declare our dependence upon you. We need you. We need your wisdom. We need your insight, and we need your love to guide us as we make our decisions from day to day. We thank you, Lord, that your Word says that blessed is a nation whose Lord is God. And we thank you, Lord, that this community and this nation was founded upon your principles, and we continue to stand upon them and look to you, Father. Help us to be faithful to those principles. Help us to be faithful to the values that you have set in place in your Word. You've made it very clear. So help us, Lord, to, when it's all said and done, to know that we have made the right choices in favor of your values and your ways of looking at things. So we thank you for this council. I thank you for reaching every member. Thank you for the mayor. Thank you for all the council members. And we just ask your wisdom upon them, your guidance upon them. We pray that your Spirit will just help them to make the wise choices and decisions. A lot of them, Father, over the year, and they're big ones. A lot of them are big ones. So we just pray that you will give them wisdom as they make these choices. We thank you, Lord, for your absolutely wonderful, unconditional love. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
And please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance by Arthur Balkum, FFW Post 6477.
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. We really do appreciate that. Thanks again. Roll call, Ms. Young.
Councilwoman Parsons?
Here.
Councilwoman Horton?
Here.
Councilman DeGaris?
Here.
Councilman Cornman?
Here.
Councilman Black is absent. Council, or Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Thank you.
Any member of the City Council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Hearing none, we will have innocence input. Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the City Council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. Seeing none, we will move on to item seven. Workshop items for discussion. A representative from Kraft, Miles, and Tatum EPA will appear before the City Council to present the audit for the City of Papa Bluff and Minentable Utilities for the fiscal year ended December 31st, 2018. Mr. Steve Austin.
I'd like to thank the council for allowing me some time this evening. Based upon the agenda, it's like I'm the only thing that's keeping you here. So with that being said, we'll try to be as brief as we can. The council has received a copy of the audit previous to this evening. We've had a chance to review and go over it. If there are any questions that you have during the presentation, please don't hesitate to stop and ask questions, and we'll do our best to answer them this evening. Before I get started, I do want to say thank you to Mark and his staff at City Hall, as well as Municipal Utilities, for their assistance and their time during our audit procedures. It's never an exciting time when you're trying to do your day-to-day activities and you have auditors walking around asking questions and digging for information. So they're very gracious with their time during our time here. You have the financial statements in front of you, so we'll go ahead and get started. The first three pages of the packet are the table of contents. You will notice that the financial statements are over 90 pages long. We won't cover all of them this evening. We'll spend most of our time covering government-wide financial statements. We'll hit a few highlights on the fund financial statements, and then we'll conclude with the review of the city's federal expenditures and the summary of our audit results. So if there's no questions, we'll turn to the first page past the table of contents, which is our independent auditor's report. This report outlines management's responsibility for the financial statements, as well as our responsibility as the city's auditor, which is to express an opinion on these financial statements. If you turn to the second letter, the second page of this letter, the first paragraph is the opinion paragraph. We have issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which means that the financial statements that you have in front of you are presented in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. The section right below that is an emphasis of matter section. The second paragraph of that one does state that the city in 2018 implemented new Government Accounting Standard Number 75, which is related to the city's OPEB plan. And I'll mention that a few times throughout the presentation, related to a restatement of beginning net position and a financial statement alignment. If there's no questions, we'll turn our attention to the financial statements themselves, which begin on page 11. And as you're turning there, the financial statements for the city are broken down between government-wide financial statements and fund financial statements. The government-wide financial statements begin here on pages 11 through 14, and they divide the city's financial information between governmental and business-type activities. The fund financial statements that we'll look in just a few minutes are governmental funds and proprietary funds, and then further divided between major and non-major. And you'll see those as we progress. Here on page 11, there is the statement of net position for December 31st, 2018. Three-quarters of the way down the page, you will see the total assets for the entire city, 154.5 million. Overall, the city's assets increased approximately $2.3 billion. 1.4 million increase for the governmental activities, and a $780,000 increase for the business-type activities. Just a couple of things to point out this evening. Restricted assets, the first line item under restricted assets is cash and cash equivalents, 9.6 million. This is a decrease of approximately 4.3 million from the previous year. 4.1 of that, million of that decrease is under the governmental funds, which is a decrease of the 2017 TIF bond project fund that was anticipated that those funds would be spent in 2018. Under your non-current assets, the last line item is depreciable capital assets net. Total capital assets for the city, a little over 101 million for the year. Overall, a $6 million increase. 7.2 million of that increase is for the governmental funds, which would be phase two of the Shelby Road Extension. Governmental activities saw 1.1 million decrease for 2018. If there are questions, we'll turn to page 12. Here on page 12 is liabilities, deferred inflows, and net position, a section of the statement of net position. Halfway down the page, you'll see total liabilities for the city, 94.7 million. Overall, the city did see a 7.3 million increase in the liabilities. Three items to point out, all under your non-current liabilities. Long-term obligations, 54.6 million. That did see a $7 million increase. That increase is under the governmental activities, and it's related to the TIF developer obligations that were implemented in 2018. Net pension liability, right below that, 10.4 million. Overall, the net pension liability of the city did see a decrease of approximately 4.5 million. Most of that change is due to actuarial variations. And then the line item right below that has total OPEB liability. If you were looking at 2017's financial statements, that line item would be net OPEB obligation due to the implementation of GASB 75, as I mentioned previously. The city is now required to report the total OPEB liability. You can see for the year is 11.5 million. Comparing net OPEB obligation and total OPEB liability, there was a 7.3 million increase in that. And the section down below that is deferred inflows. Pension deferrals have been on the city's financial statements for a few years now with implementation of GASB 68. The OPEB deferrals, 567,000. That is a new line item, once again, related to the implementation of the new Government Accounting Standards Number 75. And then net position for the city, overall, 59.3 million. Total, the city's net position decreased approximately 10.1 million. However, 7.8 million of that decrease was restating the beginning balance of net position related to the GASB 75. As we'll see in a few pages, the current year change in net position would be a little over 2 million. If there's no questions, we'll turn over to page 13. Here's the statement of activities. Once again, a government-wide statement. Governmental activities, top portion, business-type activities down below. Far-left-hand column, total expenses, 33.7 million. Overall, increase of $7 million, and that $7 million increase is in the economic development line item, which was 14.1 million, once again, related to the TIF district. The other large item I'd like to point out is under capital grants and contributions. You'll see a 7.7 million. A majority of that is going to be the contribution for the Shelby Road Phase Two. That's the reason why that item stands out as larger than the rest of them. Business-type activities, total expenses, 46.4 million. Did see approximately $900,000 increase. Most of that coming from an increase in expenses for Municipal Utilities. Next column is the charges for service for your business-type activities, 47.4 million, up about $3 million. 2.8 of that coming from Municipal Utilities. If there's no questions, we'll turn over to page 14. Here on 14 is the general revenues for the city, property taxes, sales taxes. Overall, the total of general revenues and transfers are 20.9 million. The city did see an increase of approximately 2.5 million in these general revenues. In the line right below that, you'll see the change in net position, negative 2.2 million for the year, 5.7 of that being the governmental activities, and then 3.5 million being business-type activities. And then this net position for December 31st states that it was restated in note 14. The governmental activities had a negative 5.3 million restatement, and the business-type activities had a 2.6 million restatement, once again, related to the new Governmental Accounting Standard that we mentioned. If there's not any questions, we'll turn over briefly to page 15. Pages 15 through 24 are the fund financial statements, once again, broken down between governmental and proprietary. And here on page 15, you'll see that the governmental funds, there were three major funds, the general fund, Highway 67 tax fund, and the special allocation fund. And then the non-major funds are shown in aggregate here on pages 15, and those are further disaggregated on schedules 1 and 2. And we'll turn a couple of pages to page 17, and then we'll take a look real briefly at the activity for the year for the governmental funds. Here on page 17 is the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. Once again, the three major funds and the non-major funds. Third line from the bottom, you'll see the change in fund balance for the year, negative 5.8 million. Most of that being from the major fund, which was the special allocation fund, of 3.8 million. Once again, this decrease in fund balance was anticipated with the spending of the remaining TIF project funds for 2017. No questions, we'll continue on over to page 19. Pages 19 through 22 will be the city's proprietary funds. These statements will reflect the exact same information as we discussed on pages 11 through 14, only a different format. Here on page 19 is the statement of net position. Two major enterprise funds, Municipal Utilities and Black River Coliseum. The non-major enterprise funds, once again, shown in aggregate on this page, disaggregated in schedules 3 and 4 at the back of the financials. Real quickly, we'll turn to page 21 to see the activity for these funds for the year. Here on page 21 is the statement of revenues, expenses, and change in fund net position. Operating revenues for proprietary funds, total 47.4 million. Operating expenses, 45.9 million. And then the last line of this page shows the operating income and losses, 2.9 million for the utilities, loss of 850, and this is operating loss, 850 for the Coliseum. And then the non-major enterprise funds, loss of 558,000. And if you turn just to page 22, you'll see the non-operating revenues, expenses, contributions, and transfers. And in the third line from the bottom on page 22, you'll see the total change in net position for these funds. Utilities saw an increase in their net position of 2.6 million, $927,000 increase for the Coliseum, and a loss or a decrease in net position for your non-major enterprise funds, a little over 37,000. Turn over to page 23, and this is the last fund financial statement. This is the statement of cash flows for the proprietary funds for December 31st, 2018. Third line from the bottom, you'll see the net change in cash and cash equivalents of these funds. 1.7 million increase in cash for utilities, 32,000 for the Coliseum, $80 for the golf course, and no increase or decrease in cash for the airport fund for 2018. Questions, we'll turn over real quickly to page 25. Beginning in pages 25 through 61 are the notes to the city's financial statements. These pages will provide additional details of the information that we've covered on the financial statements. We won't go over the notes. If there's any questions as you read through these on your free time, this is good, middle-of-the-evening reading. If you're having trouble going to sleep, these pages will provide interesting information. But at this point, I want to turn to the back of the financial statements to page 90, and we'll take a look at the federal expenditures for the city. Beginning on page 90, Schedule 8, that's the Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards. Then 90, and pages 91, these two pages will provide detail of the federal expenditures for the city by U.S. Department and Individual Grant Program. You'll notice at the bottom of page 91, total federal expenditures were 879,000. 750,000 is the threshold to require a single audit, and as you'll see, the city met that threshold by a little over $100,000. 2017 was 1.5 million, so there was a decrease in grant funding for the year. And then the last thing I'd like to cover this evening is on page 93. Page 93 is Schedule 10, which is the Schedule of Findings of Questioned Costs. And here in Part 1 is a summary of the auditor's results, just a list of items that we'll go through. First one states that an unmodified opinion was issued on the financial statements for the City of Papa Bluff for the year ended December 31st, 2018. No material weakness is in internal control over financial reporting for the city. And when it references financial reporting, that's everything before the Schedule of Federal Expenditures. Our audit did not disclose any non-compliance, which is material to the financial statements. There were no material weaknesses in internal control over major programs for the city. Major programs references federal expenditures. We have issued an unmodified opinion on compliance for the major programs. Our audit did not disclose any audit findings, which we were required to report in accordance with federal regulations. The major programs that were tested as part of the city's single audit was the JAG program with the Police Department and the Assistance to Firefighters grant with the Fire Department. The next line item states that the threshold between type A and type B programs was 750,000. And then the last statement, the City of Papa Bluff was not determined to be a low-risk auditee. This is due to a modified opinion on the 2017 audit, and this statement will continue, it'll carry forward to the 2019 audit. And assuming that there's an unmodified opinion for 19, and that other requirements are met, then the city could potentially be considered low-risk once again for the 2020 audit. Any questions at all over the financial information that's in front of you? These financial things are extensive. So if there's any questions after this evening, Mark has my contact information. I'll be more than happy to respond to any email or phone calls if there's questions that need to be answered.
If there are no questions, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to permit me to accept the 2019 fiscal year audit presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Austin.
Thank you very much.
Item B, the City Council will discuss a proposed ordinance establishing procedures for the disclosure of potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest in certain minentable matters.
Yes, sir. This is just a housekeeping item that we have to do once a year for any potential conflicts of interest for any of the city council members or myself.
Chair will entertain the motion.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Okay, that'll be moved to the voting session, July 15th.
That is your motion?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. A motion has been made to move item B to the July 15th, 2019 voting session. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Item 8, Bill Number 8161, the City Council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $20 million principal amount of combined waterworks and sewage system revenue bond, State of Missouri Direct Loan Program, Series 2019 of the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri, for the purpose of extending and approving the city's combined waterworks and sewage system, prescribing the form and details of the bonds and the agreements made by the city to facilitate the project to protect their payment and prescribing other related matters.
Motion for first reading of Bill 8161.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Mr. Richardson.
An ordinance authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $20 million principal amount of combined waterworks and sewer system revenue bonds, State of Missouri Direct Loan Program, Series 2109, of the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri, for the purpose of extending and improving the city's combined waterworks and sewage system, prescribing the format and details of the bonds and agreements made by the city to facilitate and protect their payment and prescribing other related matters.
Motion for second reading of Bill Number 8161.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Mr. Richardson.
An ordinance authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $20 million principal amount of combined waterworks and sewage system revenue bonds, State of Missouri Direct Loan Program, Series 2019, of the City of Papa Bluff, for the purpose of extending and improving the city's combined waterworks and sewage system, prescribing the form and details of the bonds and agreements made by the city to facilitate and protect their payment and prescribing other related matters.
Motion for adoption.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilwoman Parsons?
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Bill Number 8162 passes, or 8161 passes. Item BB, Bill Number 8162, the City Council...
Mayor, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Should it be read first? And then, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead and read.
Oh, okay. First read, and then second read, and then the motion. Item BB, Bill Number 8162, the City Council will take action on an ordinance regarding benefits for future employees.
Motion for first reading of Bill 8162.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Mr. Richardson.
An ordinance amending the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri Code of City Ordinances, Section 120.640A and B, related to insurance benefits for employees.
Motion for second reading of Bill Number 8162.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Mr. Richardson.
An ordinance amending the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri Code of City Ordinances, Section 120.640A and B, related to insurance benefits for employees. Section 120.640A and B, related to insurance benefits for employees.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that this bill item be tabled until the next meeting July 15.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We'll do a roll call vote on this, please.
Councilman DeGaris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
This item will be moved to the voting session on July 15. The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn following the city manager's report.
I'd just remind everybody that Thursday is the Fourth of July. Have a parade that morning at 9:00, and late that evening, we will have fireworks display, all donated by Briggs and Stratton, which we... They've done that for a lot of years, and we really appreciate it. It's a very expensive item. And there'll be downtown activities that afternoon before the fireworks, food vendors that downtown Papa Bluff put together, so everybody come down and enjoy the Fourth on Thursday. That's all I have.
Thank you. Is there any other business that needs to be brought up for the council? We'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? We're adjourned.
All right. Your credibility's back.